All the meeting to order. Uh, just get my. And sorry.
My ticket here.
Uh, roll call, we have all four numbers present. And. All right, we're right here. Uh, any difference in the agenda, I see none?
Nope.
Uh, look for approval agenda.
I'll make a motion to second agenda.
You have a motion from Rick, uh, from Bruce, the second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Carrie. Public comment, does anybody have anything for public comment today? Move on to consent agenda. Um, I'll turn it over to you, uh, actually go to Cheryl first with the bills.
Okay. It was pretty much all month, I see we had a bill for the. Fence that was, um, run into by a fire truck. But we are being reimbursed for that. I believe their insurance took care of it. More bills for our mental health care that we take care of here at the school. Mention that we do take care of that, there are multiple people here that are students and our teachers. The Branson trip bill came in, uh, our band is going to Branson. In the fall, their fundraisers are ongoing, so if you have a big donation for the band, let us know. And the indoor air quality bills are coming in. We are, uh, all in the middle of that.
Yep.
And I'm sure Janelle will give us enough data, other than that, everything was business as usual.
Great. Now move you for, uh, uh, personnel items.
Sure. Uh, so a couple of things resignation wise, you'll see, uh, four resignations, uh, we have two. Uh, Nathan Miller was a, a pack employee, um, and you'll see a higher, uh, to replace that position as well. Uh, Dom Plato, you'll recognize Dom's name is from our, um, he works with our boss company, actually, he's been our prime advisor for a number of years. He's, uh, resigned his position and then we have two elementary resignations as well, um, Ms. Wors and Mrs. Humbert. So, um, you'll notice those on for resignations. Um, the pack staff assignments, those are pretty traditional this time of year, we have an estimated hours, um, based on what has been in years past. And then we have a current for visa need in the personnel items. Uh, donations, I would like to call your attention to an anonymous donation that was received. Um, you will see that there is, um. So just as a reminder, our donations tab has changed a little bit, so we keep them all in the same kind of spot. And down here at the bottom, when we click on the tabs, uh, we did receive a, a $10,000 donation anonymously. Uh, before I recommend accepting that, I do want to let you know that, uh, it is equally distributed for the basketball program, girls and boys. So we aren't worried about one gender getting more than the other for the activity. Um, and then track and field is obviously, um, uh, in conjunction. So wanted you to be aware of that for, um, the donations as well.
And we, uh, have our minutes from the last two meetings in here to kind of cover. With that, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say no. Carrie. Uh, communication items, back to you, Janelle.
Right, so administrative report today, I have a couple of things to share with you. Um, it is the time of baseball, um, tomorrow, we have the Fox nine talent team baseball, um, highlight coming to Painesville. Uh, one thing I think that is while that's highlighting our pirate baseball, I think it's always important to remember that that is also our Bulldog Stadium. And so that's a pretty cool, uh, recognition. Um, so I did put the tour, the, just a link to the Fox nine talent team baseball, if you'd like to take a look at it. Um, and then the other thing that was really pretty amazing, if you haven't seen it, um, our own Haley Rua performed at Sunday's, uh, the Sunday Twins game, which was absolutely amazing. So, um, it was the FFA, um, recognition and they reached out to Haley and, and what an honor. That was, she, she just did an amazing job, so I wanted to highlight those couple of things for you guys.
We happened to be at the stadium, heard it live and it was just amazing live as it was on TV, so.
Oh, super awesome.
Definitely said that.
She just did, and she did not look nervous, I mean, I don't know how in the world she did it, but she did not look nervous at all, just rock solid. Um, indoor air quality updates, I do have some of those for you, so what these are is the progress updates that kind of have, um, and I have the last two. So in, um, for the first, the first one that I, is the most recent, so June 24th. Um, you'll see some very technical things, the louvers in area C, um, all existing, uh, steam finishing tubes have been, um, removed and cleaned out. Um, it was pretty amazing to see the amount of debris that, um, accumulates in those little steam vents. And so, uh, that's nice to have those all cleaned out. Uh, you're in the interior wall openings are underway and all of the roof, roof penetrations are complete. Um, the two week look ahead, I think is a kind of a fun piece to keep an eye on. The complete masonry, uh, they will complete the masonry openings. The initial, um, it'll install the structural sheeting, um, in the required openings of the steel. I'm having a hard time reading that, y'all can probably read it better than I can. They're going to frame in the openings, um, install the gypsum and the, um, the insulation into the old U B openings. Drill floor holes for the mechanical and continually above ceiling, uh, electrical. So this is an area that I always keep an eye on or the issues or concerns, um, scheduling manpower, um, in all trades area. I think that's a very common, if anybody is doing anything in construction right now, we know where that, that that's a tough thing to, uh, schedule and coordinate. So, um, it's just on their radar and you'll, you will notice, I'm going to just jump down to the same concerns. That was also identified in the previous update as well. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to, uh, give the, the power outage dates of June 29th and June 30th. Those were revised from the one two weeks ago, or a week ago, that were the 20th and 29th. Pretty minimal, but those are some of the updates that are coming, so. Um, those are a couple of the big updates from the indoor air quality, they're on track, um, they're asking good questions, they're keeping us informed. So those are always positive, hopefully we continue on that trajectory. And then as we move into, um, July, it is a time of, we're going to talk a lot about our referendum. And so we're going to have a lot of information about that, but it's also a time to talk about school board elections. So I wanted to provide some resources for you, um, Thursday, July 21st, MS, Thursday, July 20th. MSBA is going to be, uh, hosting a web series, I put the web address on there, if you'd like to watch for that, anybody that's interested in running for school board. Um, I did include a link with the, just a three minute little video as well. And then just a reminder that the filing dates for school board, whether you run again or you want to, um, newly declare your candidacy. Um, August 2nd through 16th is when that window is open. It is $2 to, um, file your nomination, your name, and then if there is a, a form that needs to be notarized, Amanda is a notary. So you can either commit and do it here, or you can have that done elsewhere. So that's what I have for my administrative report today.
Uh, just to tag on to that, I'm just going to do a little shout out, uh, to the community end, so, um, the youth baseball, rookie ball and junior ball, all practice over at the elementary school on Mondays and Wednesday nights. And so I reached out to Melody and just said, hey, is there any chance we can get some fields over at the high school? So we can kind of have families partake in the events, you know, the Fox nine events tomorrow and then not have to go all the way across town for practice at, you know, six o'clock or seven o'clock. And so they were really accommodating and got us some fields over here, so, you know, my family will be here for, for all the events tomorrow. And then just we walk right across the field to our practice field and still be able to get our practice in, um, and yet, uh, still be able to take, partake in that. So just a shout out to community end for organizing that and being flexible with that.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Awesome.
Uh, committee organizational reports.
Really has not.
I know, I was like, I'm trying to think. I had nothing.
Yeah.
Committee wise, so, and our student representatives have taken the summer off, which I think they feel appreciate. I'll move on to new business, uh, 21, 22, final revised budget.
Okay, um, so this is, I will just click on the, the final revised budget. So the biggest things, um, and I mentioned them just briefly last, uh, at our work session, but, um. The, the biggest revisions in here are the, the increased cost of fuel has been reflected in this, in this revision. And then, um, we also obviously when, uh, when Steve Gunn, when Steve Guzzi left and that position hasn't been refilled, that was reflected as well. So there is variation in there, but this is really what is the, the revised budget for 21, 22. And if there's any questions, um, Carrie is here as well, if we, if you have any other questions that you would like, uh, to explore. Oh, I'm not, hold on, I forgot to project that, let me add that into the. Go. Oh, it's loading, people can take a look at that.
Questions, um, but anyways, we're looking for a motion to approve the.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
Second from Jake, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, Carrie. Uh, 2022, 2023 preliminary budget.
So there's not a lot of changes from this either, um, from what we've talked about, as you take a look at, I'm going to pull up, um, I'm going to pull up the budget presentation. Cause that really does encompass everything, um, and I'm going to project that so people at home in their viewing pleasure can watch as well. So in the, um, again, the budget presentation, the document that has all of those details is linked right here, um, on this hyperlink. So if you click on that, you'll see, um, you'll see the, the document that has the more detailed, the detailed numbers. Uh, but I'd like to go back to and spend more time just visiting about the, um, the, um, summaries. And, um, the kind of the considerations, the assumptions. Cause one of the things with, um, when we make our budget is we are making assumptions, um, about upcoming costs, we're making assumptions about, um, our student enrollment. And these are the things that really have come into play as we've developed this budget. So you will see, um, we did include a 2% increase on the formula. So we are in the second year of the biennium, so we knew what that dollar amount is. When we get into next year, we know, uh, again, we're going to be waiting on the legislature to determine where that funding is going to come in. Uh, you will see the same expenditure assumptions that I've talked about in the last couple of, uh, board meetings. Uh, we incorporated all contract increases, um, it includes our insurance, health insurance premium, it includes the TRA contributions. Um, it is the reminder that 77% of our salaries and our, uh, 77% of this, um, budget and our general fund is salaries and benefits. Uh, taking a look at, uh, the buildings and grounds that I've been working with our consultants to, uh, streamline our, our support. Our custodians have been working just crazy hard over here in this building so that they can move over to the elementary. And they've been really receptive and they're giving me good feedback on some of the information that I've been presenting to them, so, um, that is an ongoing work in progress. Yeah. Uh, there are increased fuel costs reflected, there are increased subcosts reflected as well. Um, food service, again, another reminder that we will be charging for lunches this year. I do expect that, you know, that is going to be a little bit of, um, we're going to have to work hard to get that communication out because that's going to be just a shift for our families. Um, I also fully expect that that's going to be a hardship for some of our families. And I think we need to be really mindful of that and, and understand how we are going to, uh, support, um, our families. In accessing free and reduced if possible, getting information out to them, but then also just what resources we can provide so that families, um, are not, um, incurring additional hardship because of school launches. You will see the capital funds that are identified, um, coming up in July, we will approve our LTFM, um, but 10 year plan. Um, but in the capital funds, you will see that there are, are, um, subscriptions and, uh, the subscriptions and, um, license renewals. So all of our technology that we have that is licensed, that's comes out of this budget. Um, our construction fund does, it is the question, yeah, about the football field, the water pipe, is that 35,000 already half? Or that's our, that's our only responsibility. Okay, yep, every, the rest of it is the city's. Yep, good question. Okay, um, and then the security cameras, I just want to highlight that, um, that will then take into account, we will have security footage around the outside of every spot of our buildings. And I think that's important, so, um, that, that will close any gaps that we currently have. Um, the construction fund is the HVAC project, our debt service is, is the repayment schedule, um, that's really set for us. So again, some of the variables, um, our kindergarten enrollment, so when we, this year, we graduated 76 students, we have 61 enrolled, so that's obviously a net difference. Um, we continue to pay attention to our compensatory revenue, um, again, with the reinstatement of, of lunch fees. Um, I do anticipate that some more of those forms will be completed, um, so. Then correspondently, our compensatory revenue will likely increase, okay? Um, we are keeping track of our increased subcosts and we're keeping track of our, um, we have less service career increments. Um, uh, sorry, we have 10 this year, we had one this, um, in 21, 22. And then, uh, this was the shift, one of the shifts that affected our, um, again, our, the flow of when our extra money is received versus expended. And we have to have it received and expended in the right budget year, so those come in as variables. Any questions on the budget?
Just, uh, remind me on the free and reduced, uh, applications, because of the free bills, did we see a steep decrease in those or did we?
Significant.
We did, okay, and so with a push, the other direction we should be in.
I'm hoping that that also correspondingly increases our revenue, yeah.
A reminder to the public that it does benefit the school.
It does, yep, it sure does.
Those are turned down, even if you don't take advantage of them.
And you know, one of the things that I think sometimes the public doesn't always understand is that if something changes in their financial status midway through the year, they should still fill it, they should fill out the form again. And in, and, um, sometimes when our, um, when we have individuals who are seasonal workers and they might be laid off for the winter, they should fill it out at a, at that point in time too. So, um, we can do a better job of trying to communicate around that, like, how can we, why do you fill it out and for what purposes? And at what point in time do you fill it out again?
With that, but, okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the preliminary 22, 22, 2023 budget.
Can I reject with one thing?
Yep.
Um, is security of the data has always been an issue. People need to understand that it's not circulated within the school, what they write on those forms, that is absolutely secure data. I think a lot of people would fill them out, but won't because they don't want to get loose in the system. And then everybody and everybody's brother knows what their financial status looks like, that's a, it's a scary event for lots of them.
And I've heard, I've heard the board make a number of comments and I, I completely think we have to streamline, how can we do this in a way that allows people to feel comfortable and confident? Um, and perhaps that's, you know, we have one point person that is the only person that gets the forms at our, our open house tables. Or, do you know what I mean, there's some ways, or they can, they can fill it in and put it into a slot box, or.
I just think.
I agree.
Remember that, because that's, that's scary for people.
Yep.
If their data is going to get out.
I think having someone at registry, that's their only job is to sit there and try to crowd people. Fuck, fuck that, makes a huge difference.
And you were looking for a motion.
And I'm a second.
I'll make a motion.
Ever.
I'll second.
Second from Bruce, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, Carrie. 2022, 2023 memberships.
Right, so what you'll see identified here are the memberships, this is the time of year that we set those approvals for the next year. Um, there's two, two components in that I'm going to kind of walk through. The Minnesota State High School League does require a resolution, um, for their, for membership there, so you will see that identified. But then on the links below, you're going to see the Minnesota State High School League, um, C, so there are two, we had, over the course of this year, we had, um, discussion and dialogue about two different professional organizations. That really are, um, legislative, informative advocacy on behalf of schools. Um, and those two are identified, the first one is Schools for Equity and Education, um, what in your emails when it comes across or what people might hear us talk about is C. Um, that is the first membership and then the second one, the, I guess I'm going to go back just a minute and, and talk about C. One of the things that C really does is they work hard for equalization in aid for, um, for school districts that are, um. For the same household, they get less value out of their levy dollars than they would in a larger, um, in a larger community or a, uh, uh, maybe a metro school district. If my house is worth a hundred and $50,000 here or a hundred and $50,000 there, school districts don't generate the same dollars for those levy dollars. And, um, Schools for Equity and Education has been working hard on that issue over the course of a number of years. And that's why I think this, um, Painesville has been a member there for a number of years because it really does, I mean, it's an issue for us, right? Uh, we, especially we're, as we're coming to talk forward about, um, a referendum and levy, it matters. So the other one that we talked about was, um, Minnesota Rural Education Association, MREA. Um, Jake had an opportunity to be part of the, um, MREA, um, uh, conference, he kind of went to see if that was something that, um, you know, Jake has had, served on the legislative connections for a number of years. Um, and MREA has also really had a pulse on issues that are very specific to rural education. And that's one of those areas where, um, the work that they do does impact our school districts. So when we talk about, um, the, the, um, tiers of local optional revenue, when we talk about local optional revenue as a whole, that's one of the things that Minnesota Rural, uh, Education Association, MREA. Worked on on behalf of school districts our size. So, um, those are some of the key memberships that are in there, you'll see resource training and solutions, um, when you hear us talk about some of our, um, the asbestos, the water, testing the water. Um, all of those requirements that school districts have to do, um, resource training and solutions does that on our behalf. And then the School Board Association is on there as well, which is obviously one of the guide, guideposts for, that the board uses for policy development and, um, professional development. So there's two motions in here.
Yep.
Um, the first one.
At least, uh, let's correct it, I think there was a, uh, that top motion, there's a mistake there, Minnesota State High School League should be replaced with, uh, Schools for Equity and Education membership.
Oh, was it in there twice?
Yeah, because we're going to do the, um, uh, uh, resolution for Minnesota State.
Oh, thank you, so fun.
I'll, I'll, I'll read it this way, um, I'm looking for a motion to approve membership with Schools Equity Education, um, Schools Equity Education, uh, excuse me, uh, Resource Trainments and Solutions. Minnesota Rural Education Association and Minnesota's, uh, School Board Association. Look at that motion.
Awesome.
From Megan, second from Maggie, any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, Carrie. Then we're looking to, um, for motion to, uh, accept a resolution for Minnesota State High School League. And that adoption, so, motion from, uh, Bruce, second from Cheryl, and we'll look for a roll call vote.
Bruce.
Aye.
Cheryl. And Megan.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Aye. That's passed. Uh, 2022 operating referendum.
Alright, so there's, there's a lot of information in here that we're going to go over, um, and I, and some of this is, is going to be, there's going to be just, we're going to have to have discussion. Um, but let's walk through some of the pieces that you asked for, for data, so that we can kind of, that can guide some of our discussions. One of the questions that are the, one of the things that you all asked for was our trend data, um, about enrollment and about some of the, the fund balances and things like that. So let me, um, I'm going to present this for people as well. And we can talk through this. So, um, this first chart, um. And I'm not going to try to read the small numbers and you all have it in front of you and the people on the screen can see it as well. Um, but this really is, so this is the fund balance, um, that, and we've talked a lot about fund balance, we've talked about fund balance policy and all of those. Like, we've had a lot of conversation about fund balance, so I wanted to, to, and we've talked about having moments in time where our fund balance was extremely low. So if you look at that, that, it's not that far in the rearview mirror where things were difficult, okay? So when you look at this, I mean, those are really, really low fund balances. And then there was some hard work from financially to make things happen, there was some approval of referendums, there was some levy dollars, there were a lot of reductions, um, which bring us to the high point. And then we start, we're starting to work our way down, okay? The other piece that I think is important to kind of take a look at is the ADMs. And if you notice, that's relatively stable, it is starting to decrease and go down just a little bit, okay? The next chart is probably one of the, um, this one is, I think, interesting to see where our large classes move throughout the district. And moved throughout, through all of their ages, right? So, um, preschool is not identified on this chart because we always were using eight as kind of our, our, um, not preschool, ECSE. Okay, so it's not identified because it really would have thrown the chart off quite a bit. But then as you take a look at, you see those, the, the, um, trajectory of years. And then you see how those classes evolve. Okay, so our numbers, our enrollment is, it is, again, not unique to Painesville area schools. Um, our demographics are, our population is declining, um, but it's something that we need to certainly keep on our radar and, and be thinking about as we look at our finances.
And these charts are fiscal year 21, it doesn't go into fiscal year 22, so last year we lost students to homeschool and different things.
I have to look at what the numbers are, I, hang on a second, can I pull this up online?
Yeah, the last chart is fiscal year 21. So I think we went back up after, if I, I could be wrong.
I'm not sure it showed up and I was wondering the same thing, but we hit our high point in December. The COVID hit in February, so it was right in the middle of the year that I think threw all our numbers off, so.
Are you, in which fiscal?
We had for this big game was at a time where the numbers weren't.
Oh, I'm.
Sadly pulling.
In 21, 22.
Yes, 20, 22.
Yes, and then, so the 20, 21, 22 is the blue, the blue bar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then as you track that.
It's 20.
And then it tracks out from to 24, 25, so it projects forward.
Sorry, the chart, the one above at the ADMs versus.
Okay, sorry, I should have clarified that, no, I'm like, no, that's okay. This one.
Yeah, it's fiscal year 21.
Yep.
Who would I have looked at?
Yeah.
In December, we were talking about.
Yeah.
Our grade entries that we had and number of students and everything.
Yeah.
Everything was clicking, just fine, February hit and just blew the socks off of everything.
So.
And it was a mid-year thing.
Yep, these two charts are built correspondently based on, um, audit reports, okay? So that's how they're, that's why they've got the, the years that they do and how they were pulled. Okay. Any other questions on that? Hey?
So I want to make one comment.
Hey.
When I go back to us in 2010, 2011, on the top graph, you'll see that was 712, and in one year, we lost close to $550,000. Okay, that's what happens when we hit the tail end of this, it's a curve. And then all of a sudden, when we're, we're heading that way right now, when it slides, it drops really fast. And all we were doing was scrambling everywhere, trying to figure out how to have something blue on the top of that line.
Yep. And I think the other obs, the other observation is it does take a long time to build that fund balance. And then when it starts to go, it does exactly what you're saying, it goes fast, yep.
And what year was the last operating referendum?
So 2010.
2010, okay.
Yep, because that's when the, um, 20, well, no, 12, we're in 2012, 2012, because we're in 2022 and it's expired.
That's when we start to see.
Yep.
The fund balance slowly go up. The fund balance slowly go up is partly due to passing out.
Yep. Yep, because ours expires now at the end of this year, so it's, yes.
But I think in that time, some of the reason that they pulled that number was the average of the communities around here. Not necessarily the stuff that we're relating all to numbers and everything like that. No different than where we are tonight, trying to decide what to do, knowing very well, last year's didn't pass. Which would have kept us out of some of this. They just had to pick an arbitrary number that they thought would pass. I think that's why our recovery wasn't close to instant.
Sure.
You can see that went on for three years.
Yep. So the other thing that, that you asked me as a board to, to get for you is some, the, for people data. This both around us and then similar school districts to our size and enrollment. So we're gonna take a look at this one first. So this is our neighbor and again, you're gonna see you'll, you'll see, and I gotta look at my little piece of paper, so I've got the actual. These are, Recorion Albany are our neighboring districts, but they currently have no other voter-approved referendum authority, so that's why they're not identified on the chart. And then you'll see that Painesville is at thirty-nine, Eden Valley Watkins forty-three, and then Melrose goes up to two hundred. There are.
You share that.
Pardon?
Share that.
Oh, thank you so much. Yep. I need to drive to run this thing.
Top one.
Thank, well. People are gonna get seasick watching me navigate these tabs. Okay, thank you. Alright, so when you take a look at this, so again, the, the narrative at the bottom just says that these are the voter-approved, and and if there is a, an asterisk by it, the, there is a inflationary adjustment. Otherwise, Recorion Albany are both neighboring districts, but don't have any voter-approved referendum authority. So when you take a look at that, Melrose is at two hundred. BBE is at seven oh six. Newland and Spicer is at a thousand twenty and Sock Center is at a thousand fifty-five. So those are our neighbors. The Sock Center, that gap is gonna grow because they do have. Yep. You see that over here.
That's gonna contribute though.
Yep.
And the closest number is BBBM students.
Yep.
Some districts are twice the size of us, but something different.
So that was the other piece of information that you asked for, and so I wanna share that one with you too. Is the operating referendum for people comparison to Painesville. And so this is a little bit bigger graph. So as you're looking at this one again, so the, if they have an asterisk, it has the authorities with voter-approved annual inflationary adjustment. There are ten other similar-sized districts that currently do not have any voter-approved operating referendum authority. So when you look at this number, you're still going to see, you know, Painesville is, is at thirty-nine. And then we've got Eden Valley, again, that was our neighbor, similar size, similar similar structure. Lake Frittle, well, Welcome Memorial, I don't need to read them all to you because you can read that. But you do see that there are a number of school districts that have a much higher voter-approved referendum authority for people. So these, I, the, the ask that I had was from eight hundred to a thousand kids. Because that really was our kind of range of student body.
I'm sorry, I should have asked earlier, but you know, do any of our neighbors have referendums coming up?
I had a, a conversation with Mark Messman from Eden Valley Watkins and they're having a, they're having a board meeting tonight to talk about the possibility. So I do know that there are, there's ongoing discussion.
For Cory, are they going for one?
I thought they were, I'd heard that they were going. I have not communicated with them to find out for certain.
They're going for something.
Yeah. Melrose is, Melrose is going for a building bond, not an operating.
Yeah, Recorion is, I don't hope operating is with it.
Okay.
They have two separate, but sure.
Okay, so again, I think, I think all this does is this tells us that we, you know, it, it's, it's good for us to continue exploring and looking at. And, and then we, the next, I guess, discussion point will be how much? What do we, what do we do? So as anybody is, is looking at this, if you hold up the information and you just click on and preview it, you're not going to be able to, the hyperlinks won't click. You have to download the document to have it to have the options come up. Now, if you don't mind, I, I did run a couple of other, you know, pieces that we can talk through, but the biggest thing that I think we want to look at for comparison. Download this first. So that we can click on the links. Alright, so really what this, this is a probably a familiar document as, as you're looking at it. Because this is kind of the way that the board determined last year what to go out for and, and the dollar amount to run, which was five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And ultimately, if, and, and for those of you that were on the board and as I'm recapping this, please tell me if I'm I'm not stating this incorrectly, but my understanding is that at the end of them, ten years, five hundred and thirty-one still maintained you in the positive. At the end of ten years. Now, you weren't growing because you grow your fund balance at the beginning and then you kind of worked your way down. But we're in a different scenario at this point in time.
It's been keeping us close to net even.
Yep.
At the end of ten years.
Ten.
We did not have a reserve fund left. We had used it in the cycle of, of.
Of that.
Of fun.
Build and expend, okay. So what I then tried to do, and I'm gonna make, see if I can make this just a little bit easier, so it's a little bit easier for people to see. So one of the things that I do wanna just make very clear, as I was looking at this, is that I made an assumption that because the budget that was just approved is a deficit budget of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars right from the shoot, I think that the board would want, should consider making a reduction of at the very minimum four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for next year. Because as we look at this, that's make, that's taking this into consideration. So we'll just walk through the different dollar amounts and the reason that that, so let's, well, I, I put the twenty twenty-one referendum ask in there. But we've heard from our community that that's not supported. So in my opinion, I guess I, I would encourage the board not to consider five hundred and thirty-one dollars per pupil. But then we can look at some of those, just those different dollar amounts. So the second option that I ran is four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil. And a question came out about, you know, last spring, five hundred was run and I did, I've got that in the calculations if we wanna look at that a little bit later too. But so as you're looking at this, again, the assumption here is that at the end, in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, there would be a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction, okay? And then the other assumption that's in here, and you'll see there's been a lot of question about when does our op, our, our operating, or I'm sorry, our capital levy expire? And that is in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the voters, the assumption here is that voters are approving it at an even, no increase, just a straight-on renewal. Okay, so that's an assumption that's been made. And what you'll see is at four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil, we are building the, our annual balance is building until about twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, when it starts going into deficit spending again annually, okay? The assumptions that are made, an annual growth factor of three percent. Okay, so that's, that means that our budget is only growing three percent. And that's making an assumption that our state aid increase is at two percent. Doing the math, if our budget increases at three percent and our, our expenditure, our revenue comes in at two percent, we're not, we're gonna be going in the other direction. The other assumption that's made here is that our enrollment is completely steady. Okay, so clearly, if we get more students in, our revenue will increase. And then if we lose students, our revenue will decrease, okay? So this is based on, this nine seventy-nine is what all of these projections were based on. And it was, it's, that's been updated. Keri and I worked to make sure that that was the same number that our budget was built on, okay? So the reason that four sixty was used is because, and if you go back and look at the chart that has some of the, the member districts that are like over four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil unit, if you're hovering in that four fifty, four fifty-five range, there is some benefit legislatively right now to be at at the minimum four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil because it can trigger some additional state aid. There's a number of factors that come into play, but four hundred and sixty dollars is one of those trigger points. And so that's why you'll notice some districts carry at four sixty at the minimum.
Is that state aid consistent and continued or is it?
It depends, it depends on your, it depends on the referendum market value and your student enrollment. So there's shift factors in there, but there's a lot of discussion as we've talked about C and MREA and, and ed, and advocacy at the legislative level. Four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil seems to be an area where the legislature consistently has dialogue around that's if you have a levy above that point or below, if you're below, you wouldn't be eligible. If you're above, you would. If you have all these other factors. So just, that's another point of consideration to think about.
So it's easier to think about, do we have a wild stab at the number? If we had a four sixty or we passed one at four fifty, how much additional revenue? Not from this, could it, could be the, coming to the district, could that be fifty thousand dollars? Is it twenty thousand dollars?
Well, look at, if you look at option two and option three, so at four fifty, okay, so I'll pull up option.
Yeah, well, if I look over there, the net position.
Yep.
Changed twelve thousand dollars.
At the end of ten years.
To do with the state aid?
No.
Okay, so.
That's purely, that's purely calculation.
Right, so we have any idea what a stab may be? If you were at four sixty, taking advantage of all the C things, could that mean another twenty thousand force? Could it mean that?
About.
You're saying four sixty is the one because everybody kind of worked that four sixty and there's other state aids that could come into that. If that's true, then could there be a dollar associated with that?
Yeah, so currently the hesitation that to say, go with four sixty because you're gonna be guaranteed additional state aid. There are a number of other factors that come into that formula to determine are, is your district eligible for.
So.
So you would wanna have your minimum.
Sketchy number.
So you're, you would wanna look, Bruce, at the very minimum, like, this is the absolute guarantee that you would get at four sixty would be this dollar amount and then you could possibly generate aid in the future additionally. But you would look at the levy-bearing possibility of this is the minimum of four sixty and that's what would be guaranteed. Does that make sense? Everything, because I, you, I think it's difficult.
Better news is if, if these other things are, we're talking a hundred thousand dollars. Well, okay, that's something we could talk about, you know, if we do this. But if it's, but if it's sketchy and we can't substantiate, you can't talk to the public about it. They're gonna decide on a number.
Right, so, and, and the reason I put that in there was because if, if people were looking at, why are all these districts above four sixty? Nobody's sitting at four fifty and four fifty-five, that's why. What I think, I, you're right, I think we have to be, we can't guarantee additional state aid on top of that, but you close, you don't have the opportunity if you're at four fifty-five versus four sixty. I think that also needs to be considered. If you're that close, I think it's something to consider. So there's a number of, a couple of other options that we can kind of talk through. And you will see that all of these that were on the chart, the inflationary index was removed, but it is recommended as an optional. Okay, I think it is going to be important to, if people are going to approve especially a dollar amount at a lesser lesser than we were hoping at five thirty-one, perhaps there might be some comfort in an optional yes or no to inflationary index. It's something to think about and, and it's, it's a two-pronged question on a ballot. Okay? As you look at, you know, when, when you get down into the, the two twenty-seven, two sixty-five, those, those net values are markedly different and even if that, that's three hundred. But I think really what it's gonna come down to is what do we feel and believe our public will support? And I believe that we have to look at what we can sustain and endure from a reduction perspective. Because the other piece is, is we have to, we can't go in, well, I suppose a district can go into statutory operating debt, but I certainly don't think that's something that I wanna be responsible for.
Again, sometimes we, you could get not much traits in the matter because the public decides the money that we have to work with.
So I think what we have to, what the board needs to decide and what we have to talk about is where do we feel comfortable asking? And then telling the story about why it's necessary and where we need to go around that.
Without all the detail, when I looked at it, I came in at about three ninety-six. Because it seemed like if we took a little more money at the beginning, we could extend it further. Every single one of our lower options is a Band-Aid. We all know that. It's not gonna extend us to the end. But if you get into three hundred or less, we're not getting ahead of the game enough now to try and lengthen it more. And just by interpolation, it looked like if we got somewhere in that three ninety-six, four hundred, it sails. I'm not gonna kid ya. We buy gas at three ninety-nine, we don't buy it at four bucks. So maybe it comes in at three ninety-six and it'll extend us a little bit further without giving us, with a little head start upfront. I agree with the option personally. I agree with the option of asking my inflation writer, what's our inflation this year? Okay, so every projection here is based on two and three percent. Well, do we think what happened this year is gonna go away? I think these projections, if we have some history, if we were two years down the road, would look different. They just don't because we don't have anything to base it on when we're basing on what's there.
And MDE does put out the, their inflation projections and they put out a, it goes up to like twenty, twenty-eight, twenty, I mean, so they go all quite a ways. But it, it isn't out yet or I would have shared that with you because that's, I think that's something that we can continue to watch. And if we determine that that's a yes, no, that's gonna be data that's gonna be important, knowing what this year's inflation is. And then how do they project that that's going to impact over the course of the next five years? Because it's been lower, much, much lower till now, what is that gonna do from a trend perspective? With people that are, I mean, that's, that's their gig. They, they make those projections and let's, let's look at it if it's a secondary question. I, I don't think, I, I understand. I hear the public, they're not gonna support at this moment in time an inflationary index and I, I understand that.
But we don't know what to support if we lower the price tag.
Right, but they might.
Lower, lower the price tag to three ninety-six, we may be surprised and the public says, you know, school's got the same problem we got. Our food's going up, our fuel's going up, everything else, so do they. Maybe we should do that three ninety-six or whatever that number we pick is with an inflation rider.
Again, we're going to say so. Yeah, I think that we need to be mindful and put that as a second question because we have a lot of retired people in the community, they're on a fixed income. When they don't know what's going to happen with that inflation on there, they're not going to vote for it when it has inflation tied to it. Um, if they know that X amount of money is going to be distributed towards the school, then they look at it a little bit different.
Right.
And we need to look at too, I mean, New London just had it. And they had it on as a second question and it got voted down.
But they got their first, they, they have the option.
That's why, yes.
And not, yeah.
And that's why I think we need to be very mindful of, we cannot put that with the question, it needs to be a second question, and we need to look at it as inflation's gone up and it's only going up higher.
And there are forms, I think, for people, correct me if I'm wrong, on fixed incomes that they can fill out to get help. That I think we have to do a better job of saying that they can apply for help. When it comes to the numbers, I, it's really difficult because we're making, we have all these different points of where we got feedback from the public, they said no to it last time, but it was really, really close. Now, did we do a good enough job explaining what was needed? I don't know, so we're making assumptions there, but when we got the survey back, people are open, they don't want cuts to happen either. So then I would say they're in support of it. I just, I don't want to set the district up for a situation where constantly having to make cuts. And whoever that kind of sweet spot is, I don't know, because like you said, we're dealing with inflation. But we're going to have a lot of education that needs to happen within our community to explain, like showing that chart, you know, we're at thirty-nine. It's not that we're mismanaging our money, that's what we have, and we're doing a lot with what we have. And I think hard for me to say like, this is what the, you know what I mean, like where our community is at, because I think depending on what they, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I think, I think like Janelle said, with the four sixty, that opens the door for more tools for us, possibly. It's also less than the five thirty-one that we first asked for without the inflation on there. And the four sixty still keeps us on the positive side for a little while.
At least not until year ten till we hit.
Yeah, but you know, that's a, also looking at, it's not the five thirty-one, it's not, we're not asking for five hundred and thirty-one dollars. I think that five hundred number is what scares a lot of people. When they think, whoa, five hundred dollars, but when we look at the four sixty, I don't think the four fifty is really an option because we're so close to the four sixty, let's bump it up to the four sixty and possibly get other revenue. Uh, but that's my opinion on.
The other, the other piece of education that, that we do need to do and we want to make sure is that um, we are communicating with our community, with our community that um, like the average is about eight fifty, so we're asking for well below average. I know that doesn't matter when I'm looking at my paycheck or I'm looking at my, my tax statement, I, I, I get that. And I think from a, where, where is a reasonable ask? I think it is, it is important to consider from an average perspective. I know we talk about averages a lot, so I think it matters, you know, to, to use that as a point of reference, but um, you know, I can, I, I can share more of these details. Um, I think again, you know, there are, the, the hesitation point or not, the, the, these are making fixed assumptions, right? What we know are some of the volatile pieces, are, our, our our budgetary allocation from the legislature, we don't know what that's going to be. So we are making an assumption, okay? Um, we don't know what our contract negotiation settlements are going to be. And we look at just kind of an average of, of steps, we've got a three point eight nine percent is the average. Okay, we've got some higher, some lower, but that's our average, that's seventy-seven percent of the budget. And if that's going at three point eight percent annually or every two years for that, right? So those are things that we certainly, again, this isn't taking some fixed data and making the best case scenarios of projections. Um, but we have to really, again, continue, so the other piece that's important here to remember is that if our tech levy, if our, if that is not renewed, we are having a very, very different conversation. Because that immediately removes three hundred thousand dollars out of every budget. So we could say, okay, fine, just, we just won't have those tech items. That's not real, because that's a big portion. So then those items are going to come out of the general fund. We could make some reductions, I suppose, um, in our technology. But I, I, I don't know that that's how we would stay aligned to our strategic plan and kind of that twenty-first century learning. Um, but again, that in twenty-five, twenty-six, that, now you have to take three hundred thousand dollars off of every annual balance. And we're, so this is the, so this is the four sixty. And you see, you see what that would do. So again, those are assumptions that were made when we put this forward. So from like the admin team, business manager, where, I don't even want to ask, like where are you comfortable with, but when you have talked, have you went through these scenarios? So, yep, so what we did is we costed out, I'll go into that document. And then I'm going to share this out with two. So what we did is we did option two, three and four, um, from a cost perspective for our community. Um, so let me share that so people can see it. Again, option two is four sixty, option three is four fifty, option four is three hundred dollars. Okay, um, whoopee, sorry, wrong button. Share, okay? So again, this is a very similar format to what we've seen in years past. And this is taking into account of three hundred dollar per pupil, four fifty and four sixty, okay? So again, what this is going to bring you, and these are the net value numbers that we used in the calculations. And if we use a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, and actually I think we should probably come up because most of our, many of our homes have increased in value, and I know that that's something that's difficult for families. Um, so we can look at that a little bit higher. So if we look at for a three hundred dollar revenue, our three hundred dollar per pupil is seventy-eight dollars, a four hundred and fifty is a hundred and twenty-two, and a four hundred and sixty is a hundred and twenty-five. Obviously, if we run it at three hundred, uh, we're going to face, we're going to face deficit spending and more reduction sooner. Again, maybe that's the question we have to ask the, the community. Because I think what, what the board needs to really wrap their head around is what, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, again, that's one of our strategic plan prongs as well. To be fiscally responsible, what are you comfortable asking for? And if the community says no, then what do you do the following year, where do you go back?
That brings up my question. So let's say we lowball it and we get it passed at two twenty-seven. We're stuck with that for ten years.
Unless you go back and revoke.
We can go back, no matter what.
That's awfully hard to go back if you've already passed.
Well, with Band-Aids, I think you're going to be back anyway.
Yeah, and, and to me, if, if, if you lose it four sixty, you got more reason to go back. You lose it two point seven, they're going to say, why did you lowballs the first place?
Yeah.
Now you're asking for more. Yeah, I think you're cutting yourself on. It needs to be tried.
Oh, looking at a lot of the numbers, it seemed like if we could get into year six pretty clean, um, that gives us a little bit of time, let's say things stay the way they are, um, with prices the way they are. People will gradually start to get used to that, maybe. Um, you'll see other things maybe will take place, maybe something changes that would be there, but I think you, the two twenty-seven, you would, we are right there within a couple of years. And that's just way too long.
The other piece that, um, I, I think is worth considering is if this one, if this, the operating referendum passes and the tech levy doesn't, and it passes at two twenty-seven or two twenty, or whatever, two twenty-seven at the, the low ask, are people going to become frustrated because we're going to continue to recommend reductions when they've approved an operating referendum? And I get it, I mean, it wasn't what we asked for, and I understand that, but I think, I think there's a lot of, I think the board should ask for what the board feels like the district needs, hearing what the community said, five thirty-one isn't, is not an option. So then looking at taking, taking into account, making some reductions, well, that's going to have to happen, then what's the ask, what are you comfortable asking?
I think there's other consequences with a budget that's going into deficit is we've done a really good job of being innovative and trying new things over the past years. It's really hard to be in that mindset when you're scrapping for dollars. And so that's just a consequence of, you know, we're not going to be able to try as many things and we have to be really, I mean, it just is what it is. But that's something that I feel like has been exciting to the kids and exciting to parents and exciting in our community is to see these new opportunities that they're having access to new equipment and all these things, like that won't, I mean, we'll, we'll have that equipment for time, but it eventually will be outdated and things like that. That's going to slow down and stop, that's a real consequence as well. And also consequence, we want to give people raises, and you want to be able, and how do you do that if you're in a deficit?
I think adding on to that, I think it's important to educate the voters that this isn't our fault, this is something the state of Minnesota has boxed us into continually, time after time. This is a financial mismanagement from a district standpoint, this is a very common thing. And until there's a legislative miracle, which will never happen, we both know this, I've been in legislature so many times, more and more times I get more and more frustrated, but it's unfortunate that this lies to us, having to ask taxpayers continually to prop us up. And it shouldn't be that, there are other states that do it differently and to a much better effect, but I think it's important that the folk, folks here know that this, this, this is something the state of Minnesota has done to us continually, time after time. And we fight for everything that we have, and this is an unfortunate reality and that's what we have to do, and it, it's not fun, it's not fun for any of us at this table, it's not, it's, we don't like asking people for money, we prefer never to have to do that. But this is what the state has made us do, and we're trying to do the best we can for our kids, which is what we're here for. And we're trying to do best, and I, I understand with inflation, I understand with everything that hurts, it's not fun, I'm a taxpayer, I get it, I understand that. But we have to do this to educate our children, we have to have them prepared for the future, and this is just an unfortunate reality.
Can I ask, where's everybody at with a five thirty-one? Is that a fair, I mean, you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but is that, is that what people are thinking, that the community just would not support that again?
I think going back for five thirty-one would be a tough ask, knowing it's already got voted down. Um, I, you know, I would, like Bruce, kind of calculating what I was calculating earlier this weekend, kind of thinking that three seventy-five to four hundred range would be the lowest of the low um, that I could even swallow, but four sixty is, you know, without an inflation is kind of where I'd more comfortably sit, it's just a matter of knowing the comfortability of the voters at that point in time, but the, the lowest, you know, point, what I was looking at is that three seventy-five to four hundred. So I trust your calculation that, that three ninety-six or whatever that was, is probably pretty spot on.
I'm really frustrated that we couldn't get five thirty-one passed because we, we discussed, we poured down our thoughts. I mean, just guessing, we might need seven hundred and fifty, that, that wasn't enough for us, we really hoped at what we needed. And maybe adding the inflation was what we needed to not do. But I, I really think we need the five thirty-one, but if we go down, I wouldn't like to go down too much. We don't want to go into statutory operating debt. Um, that's, that's not a fun thing, it's, the government dictates to us what we're going to do at that point. We don't run our school, the government does, we don't want that to happen. They could say they didn't want to pass five thirty-one per student, which isn't of their pockets, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. From my pocket will be about the same as Tony can pick up right now. But I wouldn't want to go down too much, I, I would say closer to the four sixty mark was where I'm sitting right now without more, more details.
I feel you, yeah, I feel the same, we go all in for the four sixty. You gotta go in, we gotta get it, and it was close last time. And I think if we make the effort, we can get it. But if we go down too low and we're just.
There's, there's no sense of going down.
Yeah, we either go all in and we get it or we don't.
We're going to have to cut.
Yeah.
How much are we going to cut, are we going to cut every year, all the way through year ten? And more each year?
At least option two gives us, what, what, just five years or so, or we're at least working at six years.
And I think too, going in at the four sixty, if our voters come back and say, no, we're not even okay with that, then we have somewhere to go, if we go in at the four hundred and the voters say no, then we're even going to be hurting more. So that's.
I think we have a good basis out there, um, we have a good community out there that really wants our school to thrive. Look at the donations we're bringing in, um, the funds that just turn out of, out of nowhere, just show up to help us. I mean, we have good people out there that are really looking to help us. Um, we need them to help us get the news out and, and discuss what's going on. They're the ones that will be helping us to, um, inform the people what, what really is going on, but they're not going to have to pay five hundred dollars out of their pocket.
I think when we look at fiscally responsible, that came up a little bit before. Me forward fiscally responsible, which should be something over six hundred. Five thirty-one was last year, we have spent a whole bunch of money in the meantime, and the reserve funds are already going down. To even think that that's reasonable for today fiscally, that is not. It should be probably six hundred, six and a quarter, somewhere in that area. So when we, we look at it, it's about getting the voters to just, um, go with it. As far as ten years, I, I honestly can't look at this for ten years. We're going to have it for the voters on a tenure referendum, but I'm not going to kid anybody, we are going to be back again for, long before ten years, because it's not enough money, we know it today. Um, if they don't pass, let's not kid ourselves. We're not going to worry about a tech levy, we're going to be back every single year asking for the same thing till we get something through, right?
Yep.
So we're, we're kind of just throwing it up in the air and having to pull something out that we know is inadequate to just try and give us some time to figure out how to get through this, that's the way I look at it. And if we can get ourselves five, six years worth of time, lots of things can kind of change in that period of time. Um, we have abrupt changes to most people's lifestyle in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
And we're part of it, we all got the letter from, well, anybody in Centon County got the letter from Centon County, where our property were valued for going next year, right? Little bit scary, everybody else got that too. So we know that that's there, that's not always going to be, we just need to get a few years here. And, but we have to, as soon as possible, we have to have something the voters say, okay.
The, the other part is, this is all, like Janelle said, with the assumption that that tech levy passes, if that doesn't pass, now we're even closer to a few years away from us becoming a new tech deficit. Which is a scary place to be.
Um, I wouldn't be the first one to say, I'd be, I'm really concerned about tech levy. But for me, operating the school system is going But for me, operating the school system is gonna be our utmost important factor. If we don't pass the tech levy, we're gonna have to figure it out, but we have to have this one.
If we don't, if we don't pass, so if we don't pass. The tech levy, that money comes directly to fund everything that that, that tech levy is funding. It all comes out of the general fund anyways. Which is where the operating levy comes into. So it just compounds the issue.
In the same situation.
Just faster.
Not gonna fund that anymore. It's gonna fund whatever we come up with, with budget cuts. That's what's gonna fund what we're talking. The cuts we're gonna have to make to hit one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars are ugly. No matter how you look at it, this is really ugly and we are, we are there right today. And, but we're not gonna have these cuts right away next year. They're gonna be cut in next year's budget. We're already kind of a year behind the date. Which means that we, we have to get something passed to get us further ahead, but.
So I, I think that.
For my timeline school, I was never gonna get back to this part.
I think one of the.
Ran again though.
One of the statements about giving, the, giving yourself room the year after if the voters say no. I, I think that's something that you, that is, is wise to think about. Because if you go low and the voters say no, and then you come back and ask for more, because now it's compounded. Uh, I think that's also something to think about.
People that aren't reading anything. They're showing up at the voting pool. And last year they voted for thirty five. This year they voted for whatever number. Are they gonna think we did a good job by lowering the number? Are they gonna think we made a mistake? I mean, your mind can go crazy trying to figure out.
That's been our job to. But then that's our, our job to communicate why we're asking for what we're asking for and why. How we're being responsive. And I think the, the, the survey guy kind of acknowledged that you can respond to your community and say, we heard you. We heard you say no and the voters uh in the poll box in November, we heard through the survey. Now, so here's our ask. Here's our revised ask. Here's the, here's the reductions we made in response to. No, and in response, in response to increased costs, these are the reductions that we've made in order to be responsive. And then you stand behind, I think the board stands behind its ask of whatever you decide on. And I really do like, I, I really do like giving voters an option to say no to inflation or yes to inflation. Because I think that, I think we've seen it work in other, in other districts.
Any specific asks you're looking for us, must with this? Exactly feel that we have a larger majority kind of on that, that higher side of the four sixty. Um, as, as a good starting point, at least to, to kind of have this conversation. Yeah, and then everybody can kind of.
So the next, the next.
Isn't that sometime about August first or something?
That's July. No, we have to. We need.
In other words, we either decide tonight or we're gonna decide next meeting.
And, and if we have a decide next meeting, then what has to happen is if you remember. You remember the last July board meeting? I think we had option one, two, three, five, ten, twelve. I mean, it was like multiple options. I think we would have to have a couple of options if we don't decide this evening. What I'm hearing is more. Ask of a higher, because we knew five thirty one is what we needed. We actually needed more. Giving option and room to grow. I, it not grow. Change your ask in the future if they say no. But I also think, um, and, and Megan, I think your statement of, of four sixty over four fifty, so you'd have that option if. We meet the rest of those criteria to draw state aid is a good idea. So I, 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 when I, when Carrie and I were kind of talking through this, I would like to see either a four sixty or a four. Probably a four sixty or a three hundred. Four fifty doesn't make any sense when it's a couple of dollars difference per year. Um, to have the option of additional stating.
So do we, do you think that at the five thirty one, that the people who said no fully understood what this was?
I think because the survey came back with the same respondents and the people in that pocket, I think they did. Only because the survey was the same, was consistent.
I think if we go back with the five thirty one, that then our community is gonna say why they do the survey. And then we're gonna quit getting people to do the survey, because the survey told us that five thirty one was too much.
I, I would have been with Maggie's thoughts. I, I was thinking that too until the survey came out. When the survey came back that way, I'm, I'm assuming that it was accurate. And that was a population that would tend to vote no on a levy. And so like if Education Minnesota, last time when we passed the building bond. Like they really said, you need to focus on the yes votes. You need to get people and vote. And we did have a large percentage of our school population, parents, staff. That didn't vote. I mean, not a large, their staff did a good job. I think they were like seventy percent or something. But our parent population, especially in the elementary school, uh, that's also a big factor too. It was not that big of a difference. I mean, how many votes was it? It was less than fifty, wasn't it? I could be totally wrong. I feel like it was a close. Oh, and so. And I agree. I mean, if we need to go to four sixty, I am just saying I am very concerned that. I'm gonna put this on me instead of our board. I didn't do a good job of explaining what was needed. And so people voted on that versus being able to say, at that time, I have people that still didn't know the difference between a building bond and operating. We just went for a levy. What do you need this money for? You're mismanaging or completely, you know, I put that on myself that. I maybe didn't educate people enough and maybe it's just me believing that our community has shown up. They do show up that if they knew. They would support it. Like if they knew we have all these cuts that have to take place, would they really vote no? And I want to say our community, there is a population that will vote no. But again, that's me wishful thinking and believing the best. But I am very concerned going down even further. What we said, that five thirty one was even lower than what we needed.
I think. Communications come up here so much. So. Twenty five years ago, you didn't have so many communication tools. It's all over the place right now. So we have a pile of stuff that communicates to people that are actively involved in some way within the school. When I look at the survey, people wanted to do the painful press. But the readership of the pain's press isn't what it was ten years ago. And so, um, even though you might take it upon yourself to communicate. We all communicate wherever we thought we could, right? The issue is, what, where is everybody at? I mean, maybe, maybe it's a, a door to talk, door to door asking questions. Not something that we're waiting for a, a communication tool. Maybe we have to knock on doors and see if there's questions that need to be answered. And my guess is, um, people will ask you and be able to help you with that. For analysis, but today we're just kind of picking a number out of the blue. And I personally am not at the four sixty. The guy gets something to pass. I think it needs to be less than that. So I'd make a motion. So let's go, we'll get to this. I'll make a motion that we do it at three ninety six.
Oh, we won't have to have a motion. We'll, we'll have to have options to approve something next. They're just, hey, now.
We're at a meeting. So let's decide.
But I think we just give, you know, the option, the three ninety six, the, the four sixty and, and we come back next. Next board meeting and we, we make an approval of, of.
Of one of the.
One of those options. We can't do it tonight.
But I don't know that accomplishes anything. It's, we're gonna have the same discussion next week.
Approve is gonna be what's going on the ballot next.
So at the, at the next meeting is when the board has to issue a resolution for the ballot. With, for the dollar amount to be on the ballot. Um, and, and the language and the whole, and, and so. What I, if, if I'm hearing that we want to have further discussion at the next meeting about three ninety six and four sixty. We can do a little bit more in depth. I can pull, um, I can pull the impact, tax impact. Um, I can ask them about running both, having a resolution for both questions and we can do that. Um, and that's really what I need to know is how you would like me to prepare so that next month. Cause at the, on the fourteenth.
Two resolutions. Resolutions that can approve next.
But with no second, my motion fails. Is that what we're saying here? So then I'll make a motion that we do it at four sixty.
I, 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 I don't know our motion. What, what you're, what you're making a motion.
Get it over with and then she doesn't have to.
No, I still.
We have the four sixty and we just get it done.
But, but we still have to prove a resolution next, next.
There doesn't, all I need to know is what is the will of the board for me to develop a resolution for the next board meeting? And if you want it to be one, one, it doesn't have to be a formal motion at this moment in time, because that's gonna come with the resolution.
It has to be in the resolution. It has to be in the resolution.
So I just need to know, are you, is the board comfortable with one dollar amount? Or do you want two dollar amounts placed to discuss and, and then make your resolution in the, in July?
I would recommend having another discussion with two options. We looked at six options plus that do not fail in this short time. This is a really big decision. Next time we can look at two options and we can compare what is the difference in the tax dollars. You know, is it ten dollars, thirteen dollars and go, is that worth it? Do we think we can overcome that? I, I am not comfortable tonight saying this is where we're gonna go when we.
I, I said, you're saying Bruce too, and, and I, I, I would agree. I think having, having a resolution of three ninety six, one at four sixty. Having those two options for us to look at those two numbers and then we have that discussion and approve that resolution next. We don't have a resolution in front of us to prove anyway, so we can't do it.
That's why it's not an action item, because there's nothing, uh, it, it's a very formal process and we have to have, um, the. There's a, there's a legal resolution that has to be.
So how do we, as a board, unite in a direction for you to move forward next meeting?
What I'm hearing is I hear two.
Simple vote on the number that we think it should be. And next meeting you come back, we do the resolution, we do all the rest of it.
I wanna see, I wanna see on, I wanna see on that paper what three ninety six says and we can't ever do that right now.
Well, I can do this, but I can't do the tax impact. I can do, I can do the three ninety six right here, which I did. Um, but I can't do the tax impact without pulling it forward. So if you want to look at a three ninety six, but I don't know what that tax. Impact is.
I think we should look at.
Well, if you took a three hundred and a, four sixty and divide it in half, um, you're gonna be really close.
Bruce, would you be comfortable with us picking two numbers so that.
Have that discussion for the next week.
Have a deeper discussion with more details.
Personally, I'm not interested in two numbers. Pick a number and she works on something specific for us. Describing exactly where we're headed and we adopt a resolution. Four sixty, we do four sixty.
And good faithful, I can't go to our community and say we just picked a number.
Bruce, I can, I can.
Lots of data here. There is a ton of data here. I wouldn't go to anybody and said, I didn't review. I looked at every single one of these. And for me to interpolate what the difference between four sixty and three hundred, I don't need a chart to do that. I can come pretty close. I mean, this. It's just averaging complicated.
For me to bring comparative data with those two numbers is not a problem. I've just done this for multiple scenarios. Just grabbed three as a possible recommendation, but I.
Do you want to now, we're going to, but I've got my number already. Sorry. Four sixty, anything less than that to me is wasted.
It's all a waste of time, but. But yeah, I, I would be more on, on board of four sixty to three ninety six, but.
And that's just my opinion. I mean, the board is, we are.
Well, I see three nods. I thought I saw a fourth nod here. I could go with four sixty.
I don't think that's.
Comfortable with four sixty.
It's not something lower than that. Yes, it really does.
I'm, can you, just a sec. I'm standing in please Cheryl.
I, I, I can't. We really need more than that. I can't. If I request more than a couple of years of everything that's going on around us. Inflation, the, the cost of everything changing so quickly, uh, transportation. I really don't think it's gonna level off in the near future and going less than that's funny to me.
And as we mentioned, it's all abandoned anyways.
It really is.
Five, six years from now, we're gonna have to make some hard considerations again. So.
I have no problem with sixty and a vote in the fall. And I think with a strong vote yes committee. Will pass it. Because you know, with a strong vote yes committee, I don't know if we had that last one.
The last one we did.
For the operator, we did for the ability.
We didn't.
But we can't be the vote yes committee.
No, we can't. That's our big.
That's why when I was hearing things.
Go door to door. We're talking about. But you gotta have a committee.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to siphon a little bit about what I've heard, so that I have a little bit of direction to put a point. So I will bring, I will have a resolution developed at four sixty. If I hear feedback that I should do something, a stronger, higher ask, I will have. I will have that developed as well, but what I'm hearing right now is, is bring four sixty with the cost implications. So that we have the taxpayers, we can lay it all out. Is there any other number? A question was asked about five hundred. We knew that it wasn't enough. Five thirty one was not enough.
Five, four sixty to five hundred is still not enough, so.
Are we, okay. All right.
The possibility of some other funds potentially coming up. Let's jump aboard.
All right. Thank you. I, I know what you need.
All right, uh, baseball lease revision.
Okay, so, um, this is just the action of the discussion that took place last month. Um, and in October, uh, my understanding is that the city council did pass the resolution last night as well. So this would really just allow us to change the language. Um, again, you'll see the, the language that was changed. From three tube draft beer to regular non-craft beer. For three two alt liquor to regular non-craft beer.
This, uh, takes effect essentially immediately.
It would be today's date. Today's date would go in up, up top. Right here. Um, and then obviously it's gonna be pursuant to whatever licensing they have. Um, so.
Chris mentioned that it's gonna be a.
It's gonna be a bit.
If you master him, but at least it's done. Looking for a motion to approve revisions to baseball, so she's least.
I'm motion.
Got a motion from Megan. Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Are you done? All in favor, say aye. Both say no, Carrie. As I say, high school league cooperative agreement.
All right, so again, we've had conversation about, uh, cross country and having some cooperative. Agreement with, uh, Belgrade, Bruton, El Rosa. To answer the question about the team name, um, it was stuck, just left at Bulldogs. Um, that is not how it has been for others, but we don't even know for certain how many, um, athletes will be participating, so. Uh, what, what they left it was just, let's leave it at, um, at the Bulldogs. Um, and this would be just the, um, the application for the cooperative sponsorship. Okay, this did pass, uh, BBE's board, not. Today's day, Tuesday, last Monday. So that went through to their board last Monday.
I'll make that motion.
Can I just say? You got a motion from Bruce? Second, Cheryl.
And now the, the cost is divided by number of participants on the team or by the school role.
Participants on the team. So if there are twenty, uh, let's, if there are twenty participants. Um, and fifteen of them are pains bills, take the cost divided by twenty, we pay for fifteen, we pay for ten, five.
And we're paid, but it all goes through our school, right? That's the way it works. They would compensate us for.
They will compensate us for anything that is. Um, so I think the, at the last, um. At the work session, I had the estimated cost, I wanna say like twelve thousand dollars or something like that. And then there was like. Um, Carrie, can you grab that real quick? Do you remember what the dollar amount was? Yeah, fourteen thousand. And then, and including transportation. Okay, so that fourteen thousand, so maybe we distribute that amongst the users.
I'd say the motion, the second, uh, all in favor, or any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Both say no. Both say no, Carrie.
Uh, if they win state, who gets the trophy?
Right, I don't remember. Not everyone. Transportation contract.
Okay, uh, so the, the transportation contract, I don't know if the, uh, members of the transportation committee wanna discuss this at all. Um, there are minimal changes, uh, one of the things that actually is probably the most prominent, um, is that, um. Uh, Painesville Motor and Transfer would be doing all of the special education routes. So we, the district then no longer needs to own a handicap accessible van. Because we're able to use, they're able to provide that transportation for us, so, um, there was a, um. Um, a change from, um, eleven. Let me look, not gonna just sneak up the cup, let me, let me look, there was a. Um, we went from. From twelve, or from a, from twelve regular bus routes and two special ed bus routes. To twelve regular bus routes, or eleven regular bus routes and three special ed routes, so it's a, it's the same number. Um, but then those special education routes are funded through special education as well, so.
So does that save us from having to purchase a new one, is that the van we were up for renewal, okay, so that's a big.
Yep, so that's a, that's a, a benefit to us. The only other changes that were identified was, um, the contractor invoice for, um. For the dollar, driver per hour went from eighteen dollars to twenty-two dollars, and then the, um, cost per mile went from a dollar seventy-five to, um. Two oh five, those are minimal, when I look at what's happening from the cost of inflation and drivers and, um, all of those contexts, so. Those are the biggest changes, uh, we did have a, we did include a statement that, um, if there would be a significant need or something, um. Both, both parties agree to come back to the table, um, in the event that something needs to be adjusted. This the last contract? Yes.
By contract, yep.
It was.
That, looking for a motion to approve transportation contract with Painesville, Painesville Motor and Transfer.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Rick, any further discussions? Are you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, Carrie. The banking request proposal.
Okay, um, so you will see the, uh, banking, uh, proposal comparison, um. And that, whoops, share that. Um, and I really, uh, do rely on, uh, the people who are doing our banking and are dealing with. Um, they deal with this on the daily, uh, to weigh in and take a look at, and you'll see we had two bids, Bank of the West and, uh, Magnify. Um, there is a side-by-side comparison, um, some of the areas that, that we. You know, really took a look at are some of the, just the fees that are associated with the, um, with the accounts, and then additionally, um. The, uh. The interest-bearing, uh, capacity versus not. So based on that discussion and dialogue that Carrie and I had, um. Our recommendation, her and I together, is to, uh, move to magnify, starting in the, um, next allocation of. As the board most like, in July, when you set your bank, your banking. Um, it would be then set to magnify, set to begin as of, um, August first. So there is no, um, if there's not a, the action for this would come in July, when you set the. When the district sets the, the financial banking system. Uh, we did not receive, um, any other, any other bids.
I looked at the miscellaneous, the area, that's easy to make a decision there.
Um.
Yep.
Other than that, um.
Your upcoming meetings.
So admin committee, oh gosh, I was, I think I forgot to. Can I go back up to my admin report, cuz I had, um.
Oh.
Administrative, uh, the administration, administrative negotiations committee, um, I will need to pull you guys together. For, uh, contract negotiations with our next principal. Um, we are hoping to have that all finalized by the fourteenth. Um, just to update you all on that process, interviews are tentatively set for Friday, the position closes today. Um, it was identified in the posting that the interviews would be taking place on Friday, so try to give people enough heads up and be prepared. Um, there is a wide committee of, um, individuals that are put together, um, elementary staff members, parents, um, administration, and, um. Uh, so there's, um. And a, a board member is on as well, so there's seven or four, about fourteen individuals who are part of the, um, part of the interview committee. Um, process is going to be very similar to the activities director position, um, questions will be structured with rubrics and. Um, and then, um, I intend to work on reference checks on Friday afternoon. And my hope is to get this process moving very quickly so we can get our next principal. So that was the only to be determined, but I wanted to get that on there, cuz we do need to meet prior to the fourteenth.
You have a good file of applicants?
There are, um, yes, we have, um, there were eleven candidates that had started, um, seven are already submitted, um, all of them, there is a solid pool.
Um, any additions to upcoming meetings or changes that anybody notices? With that, then it's our most adjourned.
Move the board to now adjourn.
Move from Jake. Second from Maggie. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no, Carrie.